All right, I'd like to call the audit for the Kentucky Regional School Committee meeting of December 4th, 2018. I'd like to do a roll call. First, Wayne Adams, yes. Joanna Blanchard.
Here.
Bill Buell.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Marie Falciani.
Yeah.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Lisa O'Connor.
Here.
Chris Redding.
Here.
And Deana Trada.
Here.
Thank you. And we got the majority vote. If we could please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Have I a motion on the floor to accept the agenda?
Second.
And second, discussion. Emily.
I didn't know if you wanted the goals and the protocol to be separate agenda items or you want to discuss them as one because technically the operating protocols are a goal.
Mm-hmm.
But the other goals weren't in the packet, so. But I handed them to you. She passed them.
Right.
So I just, I, since it technically is a goal, it could be all discussed as one, but.
Personally, I have no problem. You do them collectively. Mr. Buell.
If possible, I would like to add an item to the agenda concerning preschool fees.
Preschool fees. And would you like that put on at the end of new business, F?
I think it probably would be more appropriate to the end.
Are you making the motion?
I do make that motion. Second.
We got a motion on the floor to add to our agenda, new business, F, preschool fees. We got a second discussion.
Yeah, can I just get an explanation as to why this is being added to the agenda at this point?
Well, in that case, I'd have to almost explain the full motion. It has to do with the fact that if you have more than one child in the preschool, you end up paying literally double in many schools. This school used to have the policy of the second child would be at half price. That's making a horrible, tremendous difference.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is that it's not going to even able to. So usually we can't make additions to the agenda unless it's something, right, that was, has come up and was unforeseen. So I guess I'm deferring to the chair on what the proper protocol would be on this.
Well, that was my thought from historically. And one of the instances, such as last week, when we put one on from the central office, it was because it was needed to be expedited.
Right. And it's because the public, it doesn't know, so is it better to add it to the next agenda? I guess is my question.
And I understand because preschool, you do it by the half year and payments for the half year, et cetera, is why you feel we're running out of time?
I do.
Deana?
No, I was just going to say the same thing as Joanna. I think you had said last time that it was in emergency, what, it didn't know if it could be deferred to our next meeting. Isn't it just next week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So pretty much we're down to, we've got how many more meetings between now and the halfway point for school, which would be, what, third week in January?
No, we have a meeting December 18.
18. We've got one then, and then?
January 16.
We have another one in January.
January 15.
15. Would that suffice to have it on so a week?
January 8th or December 18th.
Right. So gives us a couple.
Well, I think if you're collecting fees, one of the concerns would be that parents who are paying full freight for two students would end up paying for January, or they might risk not having their children allowed in.
Are you thinking retroactive on this?
My motion now is not retroactive. My motion is effective. Well, let me.
As of half past.
The motion would read that effective January 1st, 2019, parents with more than one child enrolled in the district's preschool program shall have the cost of the second child reduced by 50 percent.
Well, to make more sense, Mr. Buell, if you make it exactly midway point of the school year, that way.
I don't know if the county purposes, I don't know which is better.
Otherwise, Mr. LeBrack would be playing with a couple of weeks.
Okay, midpoint, I'd be happy to change that to midpoint of the school year.
Chris.
I'm actually wondering whether this is something that needs to go through the policy committee. And if the people who are very familiar with our policies right now, do we already have a policy with regard to that? And if so, does that need to go through that committee before it comes up to? That's my thought.
Well, my thought is that we have two more meetings. We should make it midway. We don't want to get into the semantics of retroactive or have it a partial two weeks. And Chris Redding's idea of policy, given a couple of weeks to take a look at it to see if we have such a thing now, because then we would look to change the policy. Correct?
Sorry?
It's a reminder to everybody on the cell.
You did that on purpose.
I called you.
Emily? No change?
Okay, just add something real quickly.
Yes.
If you are going to put it on the agenda, could you make it the third item? I just got a text, I may have to leave. So as soon as I can, so. Can you move it up? No, it's okay, I can get through the first.
Can't we just put agenda next to it?
So it's the discretion of the chair. I didn't think it would be that much of a discussion, so I will leave it up to you as to where you would like to place it.
Well, I certainly could place it on third, but you still want to go through with the vote on it.
I don't see any harm in the vote. It can always be amended later.
Is it an emergency?
Right. That's the key. That's where we've spoken.
It's just we put it on the agenda for the next meeting when the public would know what's on the agenda.
Which would be December 18.
Yep.
Right.
And that's the way historically things are and would give anybody in the public that may be in that situation time to come because they have that three days to say, okay, that's what's going to be on the agenda.
She could be wrong.
So.
Why don't we wrap it up for a break?
Yeah, you can put it to a vote if we want all those in favor of adding it as an amendment tonight. Raise your hand. Those opposed? And abstained.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to move the budget discussion to the first item so that Greg can leave?
All right.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, and a discussion on moving B, switching B and A. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? We just switch A and B. And Mr. Buell will definitely need to put that on the agenda so some thought can go into it. Mr. Hodges can take a look to see what we presently have for our policy and how we can amend it in the future.
Thank you.
All right. So now we have to go back to the agenda, and we had a.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second, then we get to discussion. That's when Mr. Buell asked for amendment. So now we're voting on the agenda. All those in favor of the agenda?
As amended. As amended.
As amended, with the switch of A and B. And opposed? Okay. Public comment? If anybody would like to say anything, any topic area at this time? No? We're quiet, awfully quiet public in Pennsyltown. Kind of nice. All right then, let's move on to new business, starting with Greg.
Well, I think Dr. Bartholomew is going to give the.
No, we're going to switch.
Just switch it so you can get.
This was probably just basically so we could give you an update of where we are at this point, but I mean, there's going to be a lot more discussion coming in. As it stands right now, after speaking with the finance directors and town manager of West Newbury, just getting a feel of what their budgets look like, like they could go up a little bit in revenue, but the number basically right now we're looking at is somewhere in the neighborhood of a shortfall of about $1.2 million. That's way more than we're used to doing. If you've read my budget narratives in the past, I like to keep it in at least a reasonable number that's manageable with the time we present it to you, the time we give it to the towns that we can talk about it. The driver is almost exclusively at this point, special ed. In the audit report we just got, it's now nearly 30 percent of our budget and climbing. We have approximately $600,000 in new out-of-district placements that weren't budgeted for last year that have come through this year, which will carry forward to the next year.
How much was that, Greg? I'm sorry.
$600,000. Additionally, internally, we've had to hire more speech therapists and OT specialists and part-time varying paraprofessionals for varying degrees throughout the district. This is not something unique to Pennsyltown. It's basically going on statewide at this point, but it's something that the state has not stepped up and taken. They're willing to tell you you have to do it, but they're not willing to tell you you have to, they're going to participate in paying for it. So it's going to be, requires some, a lot of adjustments to the way we've done business in the past. Obviously, we're going to be asking the towns for quite a bit of money next year with the building project, and you don't want to be asking for an operational override at the same time you're asking for a debt exclusion. Not a good idea. People would both know on both most likely anyways. So we'll be working a lot internally, and it's going to be quite a few changes. I mean, Dr. Bartholomew has ideas and things, Mr. Conway has ideas. We're kind of preparing you that it won't be looking at the normal, what went up two and a half over last year in a column by salaries. It's going to be a much different thing you're looking at when you get it. And hopefully, I'm proposing to get it to you at the January 15th meeting, which is a little early than we normally get it, because I have a feeling this one's going to require a lot more discussion going forward before we give it to the towns, before we give them their final numbers. That's basically my thing. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would just make a mention. So it is, as statewide, we have, we've met with our North Shore superintendents last Friday. We're meeting with legislators in December, but special education reimbursement from the state is one of our biggest issues, whether that's reimbursement for something like transportation or instead of circuit breaker, just reimbursement, 75 percent reimbursing just 100 percent and let us pay the three times the student, the per pupil expenditure. Any of those would be fine, but some relief, I think we're very fortunate at Pennsyltown because we have towns that support our students, and these students, like all students, deserve the proper education. They deserve the proper resources. And to penalize the towns municipalities such a high rate and put it on the shoulders of whatever is going to have to be done vegetary is just not fair. And it's, so I think the state legislators are, know this, they're aware, and it's not something that's unique to just the superintendents. The MTA is involved in this, Mass Associated School superintendents, as is the Mass Associated School Committee, are all rallying around this point. So hopefully, there'll be some relief, but we can't depend on that relief right, right now.
All right. Points of interest, questions? All right then, let's go to Dr. Bartholomew and the high school contingency plan.
Can we shut this off sometime?
Only, only Mr. LeBrack knows how to do that.
Or can everyone just be a little louder?
I can be loud.
That'd be great. Thanks.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
If you guys could be closer, you can't hear.
Huh?
Yeah.
Want to move your seats for a better vantage point, right now would be a good time. Who's our expert on shutting this off is Mr. LeBrack, and he's going to try to shut up the fans as we speak.
Not many of them talk really fast, so.
So, back a couple of months ago, you had passed me with some questions. What we're currently doing is we took a meeting agreement, we made a meeting with the finance advisory council, the three towns, looking at that meeting agreement. They're aware of contingency piece that we're trying to put together. So anything we're talking about, I'd be interested in this. I'm trying to get feedback from you. This has been thought of, I bounced off a lot of ideas around to folks, find out what their thoughts were. So any thoughts, ideas, suggestions you have would be very welcome. The first failure that we're looking, if there is a system, school failure. This is not a voting failure, I'll make that clear. This is a, a building can no longer function, there's some failure. What are we going to do? We saw this at Page last year, and about seven years ago, we saw this at Donahue. So this is not something that's uncommon in the Pennsyltown district. So we're starting with the high school, and I'll just frontload this with, it doesn't matter if the, if the building passes or if the building does not pass. If the building passes, we're still going to face, we need to have a contingency plan in place. So what I'm about to show you is just a couple of pieces that have to be. I brought some visuals so you can understand why we're talking about.
I'll break this a light.
Now, the light just gets dark.
I will go off.
Do Greg just leave or is he shutting off?
See, he's the only person.
No, he just left.
All right. This is just looking for feedback. So what we're looking at, the biggest issues facing high school, there are, the biggest issues if there's a failure in the, in the school. Challenge is going to be the number of teachers are going to shift, there's going to be an increase. Transportation changes and academic programming is one of the biggest. If you're a parent, that is one of the biggest issues that's going to face you. We will not be able to sustain the academic programming that middle schools currently have. If high school fails, I'll explain that later. Extra activities, of course, become more challenging because students are all over the place, and moving to classrooms, and that's a one-time thing. But those are likely, you have to take all of the classroom stuff from one building to the next and then back once the building's been fixed and things come back. So what would cause a high school failure? I brought with me, I'm always reminded, every time we talk about this, we verbally say at a lot of meetings, you know, the tough condition, infrastructure, of course, this school is, but I want to bring us to see it. So I brought some samples, and I, when you read the, when they first went to the MSBA, the statement of interest, they had to have independent, some independent folks come in. So I'm reading this from CK, CGKD, RDX. So the first part, electrical failure, how I can read.
[laughing].
I can't, this part. So for the electrical, this is all sectioned out, but the electricity is pretty interesting. Oh, yeah, thank you. Great. That's perfect. So, here we go. The electrical says primary cables are original to the 1956 construction of the building and are in poor physical condition. The original 1956 main switchboard is still in use, is in poor condition, and is well past its useful life of 25 years. According to F and T, this original switchboard appears to be imminent danger and possible failure. As part of the 1993 addition and renovation project, an additional section was added to the original switchboard to distribute power to the newer sections of the school. Though in fair physical condition, this newer equipment is getting close to the end of its useful life. Classrooms in the 1956 portions of the schools are not provided with adequate branch circuitry or electrical infrastructure. The district has installed panel boards within some classrooms in order to provide power to additional receptacles. F and T notes that several of these panel boards do not have proper working space clearance, are not properly protected from possible damage, and can be a safety hazard to students and faculty. Now, a couple of things on that. One, we hear sometimes, well, you know, in the school district or the customer, what are they doing to keep things up and running? Well, here's what we're doing to keep things up and running, right? We're trying to make things work. So the electric panels, if we watch the video, that, you can see it's downstairs, but I just brought with me, oh, sorry. There's a lot of electric pieces in here. This is the metal cable that's currently underground, and Greg Hammond is not here. Greg is out in the school, else he'd be here telling things, wait, wait one second. So if you're one in the audience, you know more about us than I do. Evolved electricity, but, but this is the newer one, how things are supposed to be wired, and this longer one is the older, and it has to do with the insulation, and it's no longer safe to scare butts. What Greg Hammond is talking about, I'll talk about cost in a second. So the electrical failure is one of the pieces. The second one, heating failure. And here's one of the switches then.
Oh, sorry, let me try to lay that down.
By the way, if you touch this stuff, your hands will get very dangerous. So when I refer to F and T, I'm referring to Fitzmeier and Tochi Associates Incorporated. They did this in February 24, 2015. But here we go on the heating. One of the boilers is worse shaped than the other and is merely serving as a backup at this time. The original 1956 heat exchangers are in very poor condition, and gate valves are corroded and do not appear to be operable. According to F and T, equipment in the apparatus room dating back to 1956 appears to be in imminent danger and possible failure, which could cause a large portion of the high school to be without heat. Terminal units such as unit heaters, fin tube radials, and unit ventilators that deliver heat, and in some cases, fresh air to individual spaces within the school, the 1956 sections of this building continue to rely, in most cases, in terminal units that are nearly 60 years old. The district noted that replacement parts were not available from the 1950s, vent engineered ventilators, airwork requires customization or aftermarket, aftermarket retroactive. Even equipment installed as part of the 1993 project is approaching its 20 to 25 year life expectancy. By the way, I did have to make mention, in all fairness, the electrical piece, we did get commanded we have good lighting. The lighting is good in the school.
Except for now.
So connected to the heating, when we talk about, this is one of the things that boggled my mind when I walked into these rooms. So our heat goes to steam heat. These are the pieces that have failed and are failing, that help with our steam heat. The panel underneath Mr. Seymour's room, in the electrical room, it says, and even in this report, talks about valves that will not, they do not attempt to shut them off because they're completely rusted through. If they pull them, then if they try to shut them off, they'll fall off and it'll cause a huge problem. So they just leave them as is. There is no ability to shift that on or off, but heating failure is, are most likely to happen, be the first thing to happen. It's not a question, is it, it won't happen, it is going to happen, it's just a question of when. Plumbing. Now, I put my paper down. F and T's observations found that gas-fired domestic hot water heaters, hot water tanks could be in need of replacement due to aging condition. Piping that goes back to the 1950s is corroded and leads to sporadic pipe point failures. The six-inch water mains feeding the high school were on 1,600 feet from State Highway 113, 2, and under the building. This main has failed at multiple points over the years, including under the parking lot circuit, not 2,000, under the front entrance drive circuit, 2,005, under the junior wing in April 2014, and under State Highway 113 in January 2015. Several sections of this pipe have been capped and abandoned, leaving the campus without the service, run fire hydrant on the north side of the building. And if you go outside, that's also where I think I may mention at one meeting, they run a hose for water to the concession stand. There's a garden hose that runs over the roof so that water can get to the concession stand. So the plumbing, if you've never seen it, I'm not going to wheel this around. Here's a picture instead. But this is the, this is one of the tubes that could cut out of the ground. If you just look into this, or you can look in, but these are running underground and they run under the building. So for plumbing and heating, it gets extraordinarily expensive. It gets expensive because one of the things I was familiar with in North Carolina would be 1958 buildings, and when we had a problem with sewage or water, the issue became that the piping is cemented in, so it's put into the concrete blocks or cinder blocks, it's in there. You can't go ahead and pull the pipe out. It's stuck there. So any repair, any repair to those systems is going to require people going in into the foundation, breaking through the foundation, installing new equipment. That becomes an additional problem and cost expense because, as like most things, built back in the days, we have this on it. Everybody recognize what this is?
I should have felt.
And this stuff right here, anybody?
Asbestos.
Asbestos, yes. So there's asbestos all over this place, and all the, and that goes for most buildings built in the 1950s. So any failure is going to require, when that group comes in, an abatement. We'll get to cost on that in just a second. And then the structural, that's, so the structural, and I've kind of put here, the electrical failure, old parts, the new part, the 1993 part and the old part, the original building. The heating, also the entire building, plumbing, both. The structural, the old part of the building structurally is composed of more hazardous materials and is therefore stronger than the new part of the building, which was built with more modern materials with no oversight, and as such, has a more quick, quicker time to failure structurally than the old part of the building. We've seen that already with the roof, the leaks. We've seen that also with, I think even the window sills have fallen over time, and that was, that's 1993. So cost, the plumbing and the structural piece, it depends on what fails, right? So there's no way to estimate. We know, because I just read off all those failure, the plumbing failures that happened, we've been able to take care of that. We're fortunate that the police patrol around here frequently because they've caught a lot of those, sometimes by accident. My, my story that I was told was that one of the officers was driving down on 13, about nine degrees, and had a cup of coffee in his hand, was just driving, and then all of a sudden, the coffee went all over because it had, 113 had become like a triangle. The wire had come up and froze and created this huge frosty right there. But, you know, our guys are great. They show up, they fix the problem, they dig down and cut. There's some pictures I don't have with me where they've gone, nurse's room right underneath there, there was the big mud flood of 2000 and.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah, 2014.
14.
Under the nurse's office, so if you know, there was a lot of pipes, and the pipes run not only just through the building, but underneath, so the building's sitting on top of a lot of the pipes. And in time, those are going to wear and burst, there was a sinkhole that ends up forming because at one point, that wing was floating. So if this is where it was, because of all the water that was leaking out, no one knew yet, it was floating, but it was gathering all the sediment, and eventually it burst through when no one was here. And mud went all over the place, down into the auditorium, everywhere. Fortunately, the officer drove by, saw that, they had to dig out the entire floor, which when you do that, you're going through concrete and everything else. And they were able to fix that and then get out all the sediment. But of course, I think that displays, that kept students out of school for a good chunk of time. So each day that goes by, that's become more and more. Electrical, Mr. Hammond reported, it depends on what it is. More likely than not, we're going to, we'd have to go to the towns depending, but we have electrical stuff that comes up all the time that we can fix. I think we know it's $10,000 or less, we got it. So he seems to be confident that electrical piece we'd be able to handle, but it all depends on the scope of how big it is, the heating. There you go. So this is just estimating. We're estimating it'll be somewhere under $10 million for the heating system, and then the abatement, we came up about 1.3. We came up with 1.3 because when we had to submit for the. We came up with one point three because when we had to submit for the, for schematic design of the, to the MSBA, so there was that number of what the building would cost, twenty-four million dollars would cost of the building. And on that, it has a specific line for hazardous material removal. And that's when they come in and they just demolish, just they put everything around it and they demolish the entire building. That cost for that was two point three million dollars for both the middle school and the high school. Would it just be in the middle school, would it just be in the high school and you can't just come and demolish, you have to go and take out specific things? We're estimating around one point three million. So again, these are just estimates. Now, one of the things that came up in the conversation, two things, when the heating fails, can we just put heaters in the classrooms?
Or electric?
Okay, because we have the electricity, can you just put the heaters in? Uh, we were told this morning, no, we cannot. Uh, fire hazard and the ability of our, our electric capacity is not there to be able to sustain that. Uh, the other question that's come up is, would insurance cover that? So if there's a heating failure, would insurance cover it? I don't know that, so, even if that was an apology, so if you think of your house, if your heating system fails, does the insurance cover that?
No.
It doesn't. But even if it did, the insurance adjuster, I would think would be somewhat wise to say, hey, you've been told several times that this is going to happen. This is your responsibility to fix it. Um, and I think that it references it in this, in that statement of interest, a whole piece that Kentucky has for the last nine years not, chose not to do that. And my guess is that it was chosen not to address that because of the potential new building. So that's the cost and time. And heating failure would be much longer time period, electrical failure, shorter time, uh, plumbing, and again, all that, all that. So a short-term solution, so when I say, yes, go ahead.
That's a typical question about cost. So I had heard at one point that if a cost exceeds a certain percentage of the building cost, then you can be forced to bring the whole building up to code?
Yes, that's correct. Thirty percent.
Do we know what our building...
So our building, I think it's either twenty-two point six million or twenty-six million, so yes, we would be...
So if there was a ten million dollar repair, it's, would that, ten million, did that include the cost of bringing the building up to code?
No. No, so we would have to go back and make everything in this building up to code. And I believe there's a number, I have to look back and see better, it's an extraordinarily high number. I'm not gonna, it's something, I don't want to say any number because it's, but it is, it is well over forty million. So, the first thing, so short-term, when I say use the term short-term, I don't have, so if we were to have it now, there's a short-term solution, get us through the end of the year. I don't, I don't know if I'd use the same term if it was the start of September or the middle of September, we might go to the long-term. Uh, but either way, step one would be the middle school would go to their hometown. Uh, so the middle school, the elementary schools then become pre-K through eighth grade. And the high school would move up to the middle school. You'll see the pros and cons on this in just a second. So everybody understands that, right?
Yes.
Everyone in here is gonna go over there and it's pre-K through eighth grade, Golden West and Way Merritt. So the, the pros, cons, and there's, these are just brainstorming pieces that come up, that can't come up. The pros, high school, the curriculum continues. So high school students, which is important because this is going on transcripts, it's gonna impact college, all of that will continue to move on. Uh, you know, you might save money in transportation costs, right? Because now, you know, seven and eighth graders, they're staying locally, so you have fewer buses coming to the, what will then be the new high school. Uh, and it's just, this is just a short-term emergency situation. Those are the best I could come up with for the pros on this. The cons, that first one there is a very, very big one. Middle school students don't want to receive academic programming they currently receive. We do not have the capability, I'll just use sports medicine as an example. We have middle schoolers who currently come over here to take sports medicine. We do not have the capacity to hire an additional athletic training or someone who's certified in that to go and teach all the students at the three, or to just go to Baggedown one day, go to Paige another, and then go to, uh, Donahue the third day. So, more likely than not, and again, this is not defined too, but from an academic standpoint, from a curriculum standpoint, they would likely move on or go, go back to a traditional uh, elementary schedule where we probably block it. So you would have math in a block, you'd have English in a block, you'd have science on A day for a block, social studies on B day for a block, and then your, your fourth block there would be, uh, whatever elective might be that day. Art, music, band, you might have foreign language because we, we have the building, we would have the capacity to do foreign language still, uh, but it'd be greatly reduced. Yes.
But then you're gonna, I mean, aside from all of the other things, like you're gonna have some kids who are in the middle of a math, you know, sequence.
Sure.
And then suddenly, they can't take the math sequence anymore, so they're gonna be like...
So in math, so this is the exception, so I put an example of Algebra One, but if it wasn't math, if it was something like a...
Whatever their eighth grade science, I mean, whatever their subject is, if they're on an accelerated track, for example, not just taking high school level classes, but those are, I mean, you're gonna have kids who have serious discontinuity in their curriculum.
Yes.
Among other things.
So this is, this is also, in a short-term situation, we would also have to look at, what are other alternatives? Is there some online, so a student like that, can they go online, take an online class and do it that way? And we'd have to get creative. And it also would be, you'd probably go to a lot of teachers and say, listen, I know you're teaching Algebra One, can you also teach geometry at the same time?
Differentiate that really well.
And in really small schools, that's something that they sometimes have to do. So that, that program is a really big thing. Cost of the extra teachers, you would definitely have to, in order to maintain some level of programming, you'd have to, you can't, so for example, there's, I think, four teachers, four science teachers, the seventh and eighth grade at all of the levels. You, you can't cover all the middle school by taking a teacher who's three out of four and bouncing him and moving him around. We might be able to do that in some areas, um, where one teacher can't float, and you can, but what we know, we hire, have to hire some number of teachers. Tight space at the high school. So, right now, the new high school, Mr. Seymour is working on a plan, he's actually chartered it up for me already. There are, at the middle school, when we get creative. And by creative, we're using the, you know, we remember we had that meeting for the, what used to be a banner when I was there, is now, uh, Media Center. But we turn that into three different types of classrooms. So that ends up being, we, we have, we can count up forty-four classrooms, and that's turning the auditorium into two separate classrooms. So forty-four classrooms covers us, and there's seven periods, covers us for five to the seven. Uh, the other two periods is forty-seven and forty-eight. So we would just have to get very creative. So it's tight, tight spacing, and we end up trying collapsing some classes down where we could, uh, to make that happen. At Bagnow, so Donahue has space, they'd be able to handle it. Paige has space, they'd be able to handle, terms of space. Bagnow, we believe has the space. Uh, Mr. Terry walked, with Mr. Day, walked through the school, uh, there identifying some spaces as well. And ultimately, you know, there's, looking on their pre-K, so tight spaces, in addition to pre-K, and eighth graders or kindergarten, eighth graders being on the same bus, which is a parental concern, I'm sure we would hear. That's, that's what was the norm where I came from, but I understand it as a parent, I definitely understand that. But also, in, within the building, now your kindergarten's gonna be interacting with the eighth grade, so, this, all the elementary principals are aware of that, and they're certainly in tune with that's gonna be a concern, so they would make the adjustments.
Um, it's gonna put a string on the lunches too, because it's adding a whole different, like a whole nother...
Yeah, fortunately, um, all three schools have space. So, I, I think, yeah, they have space, so lunch might not always be in what we consider the cafeteria, so they might have lunch in other areas. But yes, it will. It will, culturally, it will not be a fun experience at that point in time. But again, this is just a short-term.
Question over here, please.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say space, like you said, you know, Donahue has space, but when Paige was displaced there last year, the space that the Paige students got actually took away from like the special education programs, and they were in the hallways.
Yes, that's true.
So by space, what do we mean by the outside space?
So I, when we go into some of the buildings, we might be looking at some offices, some, I think in some areas, the PTO might have an office space or a lot of the small classroom that no longer exists. So special education, Dr. Jarvis and I are working on trying to figure out what would be the best model to, uh, to do this. Uh, we haven't come up with a final solution to that yet. Uh, but that, those are our things, like, it is moving, takes off and on. Yes, sir.
And the point is, excuse me, this building has failed in this scenario, so how much can we, is it, we have to?
Yes, that's right. This, this is done now. So another question that had come up, uh, is, well, can we just bring in some module units? Because I, I went through, I said, okay, well, we can just, how much would it cost if we bring out two, eight classroom pods and we combine that with some other trailers? Well, I was told, you can't get them right away. Like there's, it's gonna take time for them to arrive, even if you can. Now then you have to figure out where you're gonna get them, do you purchase or rent them, purchase or lease them? And it still requires to go to the towns. Uh, this will require us to go to, depend on the failure. That would, that would definitely require us to go to the towns to get the funding for in order to hold school. And then we know, I think the ones that we had up there, that we got because of our increase in student population, uh, they ended up failing.
We had four for the flood.
The mud flood.
The mottage studies were.
Yeah.
That's right.
The mott.
Um, so, and then, so high school programming, I put there, would be greatly reduced, as teachers would not have enough time for them to leave and return to high school. So, but by that I meant, so if teachers, they're teaching right now five of seven classes, but of those five, some of them are middle school classes. But if I teach first period high school, second period middle school, then third, fourth, and fifth high school, I don't have time to leave the high school, go to the middle school, do anything, and then come back. So now all of a sudden, we have teachers with, not, not doing full programs, um, and that's not what we want. Again, short-term. Your long-term solution, oh, this is... So I will say, academically, this is by far the most sound approach, I've got there. By long-term, I, using this to mean, we start the school year. So we have to start the school year in this, we know it's gonna take a long time because either we can't fix it because it's too expensive and it's gonna require all sorts of financial overrides, or, uh, it's just a repair, it's, it was in the process of it, it's gonna take a long time. So long-term, so we still move the high school over to the middle school, and then we regionalize all grade levels. Number-wise, we sat down, looked at it, we put kindergarten and first grade over to Sweetser, that's three hundred and thirty-three students. Second and third grade to Donahue, that's three hundred and thirty-one students, and you put pre-K over there as well. Fourth and sixth grade over to Bagnow, and the middle school over at Paige. Anybody have any questions about that? There's gonna be a pros-cons table on this one as well.
In case we can't think of it.
Yeah, right. I will say, this is far better than when I heard the story of, we're gonna send kids to Newbury Court and Hayville and Amesbury. Now, and, and I'd like to just pick them up and address that. If, just, I want to be clear on this. It's not like those schools are bursting with space to just accept our seven hundred high school students. They are not. And, the cost to us is not five thousand dollars like a school choice, it's whatever they charge per people expenditure. So it is not cheap, it is extraordinarily expensive. And again, it's not like they have the space, I mean, it's, it's just not the, so this, this is the long-term. Now there's obvious, so the pros, it's education ideal, you have all, I mean, kindergarten and first grade together, that means you have all the kindergartens, all the first grade teachers and students, they're all together, it's very, very appropriate. Uh, middle school has the ability to maintain most of the opportunities, so middle school now all together, we, we can do that. You, your educational program at that point, you're still, you're clicking on hollow cylinders. You will, you'll lose a little bit, you won't have, be able to walk back and forth to the high school, but we can hire people to take care of, um, all those students. I don't know why it says, uh, high school, high school, high school still in place, personnel, you have the personnel in place to deal with this right off the bat, and there's no grade issues on the bus. So you don't, if you're, if that's a concern, again, where I, where I come out, that was the norm, we never, we did not have problems with kindergartners and upper-class kids just because the bus drivers are smart enough to section off. The cons, transportation, possibly longer bus routes. I, I, I would say definitively longer bus routes, but Sal's transportation or the transportation experts, I'm not, in my mind, I think, okay, if I have to go from Merrimack to Golden, because my child's in sixth grade, does Salter pick up a whole bunch of students in Merrimack and then come over and drop them to Golden? Or do they pick up just a couple of kids in Merrimack, a couple of kids in West Newbury, and then a couple of kids? I don't know the answer to that, but transportation would definitely, um, be a con. So the new high school still, we, we talked about that already, too, new high school, it doesn't feel right, it won't, and I put this in quote, it just won't feel right to parents. When you look at the Donahue and Sweetser situation, that's actually a nice benefit, at least the younger children are in the same area. You have them at Sweetser, and then you have them at Donahue, and even though pre-K's at Donahue, they'll be going to Sweetser and then coming back to Donahue. So, for that, that's the same point, that's nicer in the same area. But just, I cannot imagine the parents who are used to having an elementary school that they might have gone to or they're, that they're gonna be like, oh, yeah, this is a great idea. And then, uh, the other, the other con, the regional agreement right now, it allows for us to do these things in case of emergencies, but it also says the regional agreement, um, that the buildings are to be maintained as elementaries unless there's an emergency. So, that's something we have to work out with the towns. From an academic standpoint, this is not even up to grasp. That's the smart way to go from an academic standpoint. But I'm a human as well, right? So, from a parental standpoint, I can understand the hesitant concern. So, if you don't go to this route, but this is not the option, the other option long range would be, okay, pre-K through eighth grade. And again, academically, we're now back where we worked the short-term plan. So... This is just, I'm looking for your feedback, your thoughts, because I'll sit, I'll go, and we'll meet with Financial Advisory Council, and we'll have these conversations so that they kind of understand, and we can't make any big changes anyway without going to the towns. Right now, this, so this is just betting, this is just betting, and just to be clear for anyone in the audience, this is not if the high school, middle school project passes or fails, this is the reality of when the heating system does fail. These are the contingencies that we've got, the draft. Yes, should be able.
First of all, I'd like to, without sounding so formal, thank you for presenting something that's very clear, uh, and is certainly at a bare minimum a point of departure for conversation. I think it's gonna end up being a lot more so. Again, speaking for myself personally, I think you've done a very, very good job. Thank you.
Well, wasn't me, I just put this together, it's a whole team effort, but I, I appreciate it. I just thought, we talked about this a lot, and I could have sat there and said, but I thought, people visibly seen, and these are not, all those pieces are not like ten years old.
No, the first, the first flood here happened right after Thanksgiving.
I remember that.
And the entire wing was underwater and steamed with mold. And Jonathan did a superb job in getting, and Arlene Towns, I think it was the principal then too, but the mods took, I think, end of January, three months to get here, so you had classes and cafeter, and cafeteria stuff going on in the auditorium. So this at least is a definite plan, if not Plan A or B, so.
So that explains a lot, because when Mr. Seymour's having this conversation today, and he's telling me he's one of the three classrooms in that Media Center, the junior high, he's telling me my school, I'm looking at him like he's crazy, and he's had this experience, he had to go through this before, so he understands. I, I'll also mention that right before Thanksgiving at the middle school, there was a nice little water main brain... water main braid that was gushing water into the counseling office. Unfortunately, we were in school, in session, someone got to it and was able to stop that quickly. But that's, that's the reality of being currently existing in. Yes?
You said the heating system is forced hot water, right?
So it's boiled.
Okay. So even if you just replaced the furnace or the boiler, the piping system in the building is ancient, so when you get, you know, when you get something new like that, it's gonna put a lot more velocity through, and the pipes aren't gonna be able to handle it.
So I, I had the opportunity, they were cleaning out, working on the boilers this summer, and had the opportunity to go, it's really neat to look at. I don't know what to look at for failure, I have no idea. But those, everything I brought was a boiler, right, it's too big, but was the piping? And yes. So it doesn't matter if you buy brand-new boilers, it's still, what's connected to it is corroded, corroded, because I mean, it's, and I'm sure there's parts that are great, and there's other parts that are not. Yes?
I know how you said the middle school curriculum would be greatly affected, but I'm also curious about, like, right now, we have a regional autistic program, a regional dyslexia program. So would a fourth, fifth, sixth grader who has dyslexia wanna have to go to a dyslexic program at Sweetser and be the only fourth, fifth, or sixth grader with kindergarten through first grader?
Yeah, so that we would not, so we would still try to group students together and keep a program that makes sense, and that's what Dr. Jarvis and I are still trying to hash out, because that's gonna be very, very important.
I know, I know. Can I address somebody?
No.
Go ahead.
Are you through with this slide presentation?
I am.
We'll get the lights back on there. You know where they are, the teachers' room.
The teachers' room?
What?
So, just thoughts, suggestions, handing out other things for me to consider. I'm a simple person, so I'm not, uh, what's happening?
He had a question.
Brian?
No, 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 it's fine, I can ask later.
I was just gonna say, we've had the opportunity, normally we don't allow far, but there's a lot of discussion still to be going on among the school community people, it may come up, and your question could be answered before you're done. If not, several of us, particularly Dr. Bartholomew stays after and will answer them privately, all right? Chris?
So, one of the things that I've heard, when we're talking about how ancient this building is, and why haven't we updated systems in a better way, and how's, how are we gonna make sure that that doesn't happen with a new building? So we have a brand-new building, 20 years into it, it's not a brand-new building anymore, so is there, like, look, assuming the building project were to, were to pass, I think one of the things people need to be assured of is that we're gonna have some kind of capital maintenance program that will keep us from getting to this point.
Sure. So, I think you, you all probably know this, the building committee certainly would, but you are required to have a maintenance plan that you submit with the MSBA, and how are you gonna take care of the building. Here, I would say, when we did the addition in 1993, I've heard people point fingers at custodians, I've heard people point fingers at administrators, that's, that's crazy. Neither the custodians nor the administrators are construction people, that's not what their feel is, that's not their expertise. So even if they were responsible for overseeing it, and I don't know that they were, if you put me in charge, I wouldn't know what to look for. I'd have to research the heck out of it, and I would do my best to find out, but, you know, there's all these other duties you're responsible for. I think what we are fortunate to have now is that you have someone like Greg Haddon, you have someone like Greg LeBrecq, who are incredibly, Greg Haddon's position did not exist back then, so there was no one within the school to really see, watch what was going on. When you have someone like Greg LeBrecq, who is not going to spend a dime without making sure he's getting his dime's worth of effort, I think that, that has been a big help. And to me, when people have asked me about this, I pointed to the facility in the back of the middle school, which I almost fell over when I first saw, because it was nothing I ever dreamt could ever be at Penn Tucket. But that is a very nice facility, and we are coming up on having to resurface, I think, sometime this year, and he, they've been very meticulous about making sure that there's a schedule that money gets put away for that to happen. I step on that track, and that's the nicest track I've ever been on, ever, and that includes down at Carolina Street, I mean, it's remarkable how well, and that's because they were both there to make sure things were done correctly. And from what they've told me, there's several times they saw someone making a mistake, and that mistake was corrected by the foreman, so that's, that's nice to have.
I think as a follow-up, I think the school committee, the administrators, the towns also need to commit to the fact that if we have a capital plan, we need to stay with it, and we need to not say, well, instead of $500,000 this year going into it, we'll use it for educational purposes. Like, I think that has to be a commitment from all of the parties involved.
I'll tell you just one quick, so Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Beal, you and I both worked with Clark Jenkins, and he was a great person, he did the technology and innovation, it was under the Science Department, and he's now working part-time with the maintenance crew, and he said, the hope when he was brought on was that he could catch up on the list of things that had to happen. But since he's come on, not even, they've not been able to get near any of that list, because they're just trying to Band-Aid and fix everything to keep things going, not just in this building, but just, there's, there's things across the district. I know the educators are extremely appreciative of the work he does, but it was, it was interesting to hear that from a perspective that's not in a maintenance perspective, but just someone who was coming in thinking they were gonna be able to start, and Greg Haddon, I know what, was hoping that would help, and it, we just, there's too many issues.
I think you'll agree from going every week, I think, puts your minds a little bit at rest, I believe, the construction and the design, the architectural things presently are significantly better than they were 70 years ago, so I'm not sure that we'll get cut short with a six-inch main buried under 12 inches of concrete with no ability to access it without ripping up the school. I think that would make us feel a little better. However, I think you're absolutely right, the track's a good example of what we need to do to keep it up, and just as the track is designed a lot better than it was in the '50s, and I think if and when this project goes through, we'll get a building that, there will be such a thing we keep an eye on, but at the same token, it's not gonna be significantly better architecturally and designed than what we presently have, and that is to be able to maintain it, to make it as efficient as possible for the longest period of time. Keep in mind, I told us, life expectancy for the MSBA said, it still remains 50 years. How the upkeep, the, us able to keep it up in the maintenance thing should be significantly easier, better, and less costly. That's the whole idea of us trying to think ahead on these projects and not making the same mistakes we have historically.
If I could just say one more thing, so it's, it's very, just back to your comment as well, when I, as Mr. Abbs just mentioned, I've been, MSBA had asked us to take a look at schools, so I've traveled around the state, looked at some newer schools that have gone under, down the whole process, and then I'm able to come, take my experiences in North Carolina, go to these places in Massachusetts, and then I come back here. And, and, you know, I know that the maintenance gets criticized an awful lot, but I think there's another way to look at that, and it's that they've kept this going for so long. And when I look at those new buildings, the systems, I mean, it is, it's remarkable. And then, you've heard me say before, it's, I look at what the children there have and what our children have, and I don't mean just in terms of a building, but because the way the building is designed, the opportunities, and it is not equal.
All right, any more points of interest, and we can move on. Thank you very much, we appreciate the update. Hopefully, we'll have something in place before we need to utilize and continue to fight.
Yes.
All right, that brings us to new business C, school committee goals. Emily, would you like to take over?
So, you all have a proof copy based on the revisions we made two meetings ago, we, um, feedback. I changed a couple things tonight, when I was, like, school year was capitalized where it didn't need to be, so when I was trying to print out another version from our edited version, I had to recreate, because I couldn't make that one print as a clean copy, so when I cut and pasted it, I did a couple of little things like that, but aside from that, I've changed nothing since your feedback. So...
We'd be looking for a motion on the floor to accept them.
Those, and if so, then I have a second point.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the school committee's goals as were written and revised and feedback. Yes.
Yes, and a second, any discussion?
Well done.
Okay, thank you very much, and let's kinda take a vote. All those who are in favor, raise a hand. Opposed? All right, after a long, five months, it's done.
So, um, C and a half, in your packet you will find, so this is also under the category of school committee goals, in the packet you will find what I imaginatively titled, the Penn Tucket Regional School Committee Operating Protocols, which are goal number three in the previous document, that is, we've now agreed we will try to have published and all finalized and everything by January, so I took, again, the feedback that you guys had given from when we got all of those templates from...
Dorothy.
Dorothy, and tried to hit all of the things that people had been mentioning. Again, I looked at Mary and got us the notes from that, I tried to hit as many of those as possible without making this a ridiculously long or ridiculously small print document. So I would welcome feedback, but I, seeing one of those people who doesn't like to not do the goals that we say, would like to have you look at this, and maybe if we can't deal with it today, even though I know it was in the packet, I would certainly like to have it done by our next meeting.
So are you proposing it being a draft, or something you would like us to just vote on?
Well, I, I don't know if people have read, I know it was in the packet, but I don't know, like, how you would let it out. So, have you read it? Are you fine with going forward today, or would you like some more time to hang out with it?
I've read it.
You had a lot of smiley faces among you.
I mean, so if people are comfortable with that, we can move forward, but I would ask that we...
Make a motion to...
Yeah, that.
Approve the operating protocols. Put forth in our goal.
And the second, discussion? No discussion? All those in favor of approving the Penn Tucket Regional School Committee Operating Protocols for 2018, 2019, please raise your hand if you're in favor, opposed, and again. Thank you very much. And could you remind me who worked with you on the, your product rule on your subcommittee?
Dina and Marie and I worked on the goals, and I pretty much borrowed some phrases for the operating.
Thank you, Dina and Marie.
But I mean, based on our efforts. Right. Totally.
Well, that brings us to the new business E, donation, Bagnell, occasional, Dee updated the superintendent's goals.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. So, overall, I think it's just good practice, if I'm gonna write goals that I update periodically, where those goals are, instead of waiting till the very end, to find out whether or not I've succeeded or failed. So just recapping the goals very quickly and what I've done so far, this is a new, the goal one was my participation in the new superintendent induction program. Just so you know, obviously, I've attended all the sessions, I've completed all their assignments. Ms. Conley, you've met, you all met Ms. Conley, she was at the, when we were meeting with Dorothy Presser. Not only has she been to that, she's also been with me, so she's gone to, done walkthroughs with me in a building, she's gone to our admin team meeting on Friday, and she's also been, came to a superintendent roundtable meeting, and she was in a, we had a pre-school committee meeting, meeting. So she, she's comes there, and she's, we have those meetings, and we have separate meetings, but fabulous to work with. For the second goal, effective entry and direction setting, you all know I've submitted to you my entry plan. So far, the survey results, we, I have 527 parent, parent's results, 204 teacher responses, and 1,234 student responses, those are all actual members. So that's great feedback, and as you know, as part of the entry plan, that will be analyzed, broken down, and sometime, January, February, at a meeting, we, I will bring that to you and go over those results, and then we'll talk about the next steps. The third goal, maintaining momentum during transition, during any transition, you do not want a big, oh my gosh, what's happening here, and teachers don't know what's going on. So, one of the big things, and he was talking about the evaluation cycle, so we, early on, Mr. Conway made it a point to make sure we had everyone on board with what the evaluation protocol is here at Penn Tucket. That includes all principals, administrators, they've all done their self-eval, and submitted goals, and all the principals, I've met with all of them to go over their, go over their goals, and also let them know that what I'm dealing with them, I also expect that they'll do with their teachers. The videos are part of this as well, we try to keep people informed. Now, there's all, you know that there are videos, we'll create a little section on there, just put all those videos together, because there's some you haven't seen yet, which are somewhat entertaining. The next one that's coming out will have to do with making a weather decision, and I hope everyone will enjoy it. And then, obviously, it starts with community, being out in the community, I am out, try to get to as many events as possible, and it's great, because I've got children, so I'm able to take them with me to a lot of the events which involve children, and they love seeing their friends, and it's, it's nice, we get to do things.
Do children allow you to come?
Do my children? So, yes, they're not that old, but in a couple of years, that will end, it will end. There'll be an embarrassment, and which I will go out of my way to make sure that they are embarrassed. And then, so, so those were the three goals, and the fourth goal, which I, I have this here, or I can't. Now, here we go. And then the fourth goal was fair, effective classroom teacher evaluations. So we've already, Mr. Conway and I, even this morning, we're walking through Donahue School this morning with the principal, walking through, looking at classroom practices, and then after we have these walkthroughs, we sit down, we have conversations about, okay, well, you viewed it, you evaluated this way, we looked at it this way, and then we have a conversation, because what we wanna make sure is when we have, early on in the year, I met with the principals and we talked about what's, what's really, we don't wanna do 12 different things when we walk, do a classroom walkthrough, a few. We wanna look at just a few and try to make sure that we go through and we're looking at instruction, and with fidelity, we're kind of marking teachers at the same spot. We've gone right around 100 classrooms, we've collaboratively gone together, it's not just administrators, teachers have been, some teachers have been a part of this, department chairs, I know have been a part of this as well, so everyone gets feeling, and we heard from Desi last week, when they came in to do a whole, or a review of things, of their February review, and one of the things they talked about was involving teachers in that whole process, and we had a little conversation on how that'd be a great opportunity to evolve, in my opinion, the beginning teachers going around observing other teachers, teaching's a great, great exercise, even veteran teachers walking around, so they can see things through a different lens. It's very hard, as a high school teacher, it's very hard for me to get out of my classroom, go to another teacher's classroom, but when I was able to do it, I was able to go to another teacher's classroom and steal a bunch of good stuff that they were doing, and bring it back to me, absolutely, bring it back and make it my own. So that's, that is where we are. Data, we've gone and discussed a lot of data with principals, tried to prevent teachers from just receiving a, hey, this is how things went last year, and giving them a sheet of all their students with it, because that is not productive in any, I mean, that's, for the most part, last year's autopsy data, and you can't necessarily use that for next year. So, we're working with the principals, just helping them to interpret what's purposeful there, what do we wanna look at, what do we wanna target, and I think you heard some of that in their school improvement plans last week, of what they're looking to do. So that's, that's an update as to where I am on my goals. Does anybody have any questions?
Great update, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, points of interest, and could you tell us a little bit about the Bagnell Educational Foundation?
I absolutely can. So, we were very fortunate over at Bagnell to receive more money, so Bagnell is really... So, Bagnell is really hitting up their technology, and Bagnell Education Foundation is purchasing Chromebooks, and they're donating $10,135.46 to the students there. Ms. Cutary has told me, I believe, is all students grade four through six, or three through six will be one-to-one, and then K2 will have other access. She worked very closely with Mr. Buck, our technology, chief technology officer, to go ahead and make sure that we had the capacity to handle that. So those students will be well-equipped with technology. And of course, one of our big pushes this year is to make sure we start using Google. We're working on developing a long-term plan of where we want all teachers to go. Right now, we're just trying to get them to email, just make sure they're familiar with email. Everyone's pretty good with that. And then it's a matter of, can you move that, take that up another notch, and start doing Google Docs, Google Sheets, and then take it another notch, can you do Google Classroom, Google Sites? But there's no way I would ever expect everyone in the first year to be, have Google Classroom, Google Sites, because frankly, we don't have a tremendous amount of time with professional development, so we're going to make sure we infuse that everywhere we can.
Motion to accept the donation from the BDF. Second.
Discussion? All those that accept donation? Opposed? Passed? Emily, I guess you're on again.
Motion to adjourn.
No second?
Mr. Chairman, it's possible. Lead by Brett, right, it's his, or I, I believe, Bagnell has a fundraiser at Flat...
Tonight.
Flatbreds?
Flatbreds, in Georgetown.
Wednesday.
Tonight.
They do it Tuesday night.
Oh, it's Tuesday, you already missed it.
Oh, it's tonight.
You can still go over and get your food.
Oh, it's tonight, no, I've already had dinner. All right, I thought I saw a hundred, so, thank you for the bread.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.